I'm about to call the Cranston City Council meeting for August to order. If I could have all the council members, please take their seats. Because I am now in charge of this meeting, I will sit and tell you that anyone standing on the back of the wall per fire code needs to be sitting down. So if we could get comfortable and slide in a little bit. As you're a firefighter or a public safety member, I need you to take your seat somewhere. I'm giving firefighters, we good? Thank you guys. Alright, I'm gonna call the August meeting of the Cranston City Council to order. My name is Clark, please take the lead. Present. Yeah. Present. Council vice president, if you could assist me. You know Cranston is the best city in the state of Rhode Island. And we have some of the best communities in the state in our city. And one of those communities is Alpine Estates. Alpine Estates is a wonderful community of families that all try to do the right thing by their residents, by each other, and they have a kinship and a family to try to work together for the betterment of their neighborhood and the betterment of Cranston. Councilor Brady was privileged to receive communications from several people who live in Alpine Estates talking about the community service and initiative to set up a lemonade stand to really drive engagement for the neighbors and people coming into Alpine Estates to adopt a spot at the front of their flat to talk about how great Alpine Estates is. If you look at Alpine as you come in, there's a sign, it's really old, it needs to be updated. So these good young citizens took it upon themselves to create a lemonade stand and raise money for their community. So in recognition of their community service and initiative in starting a lemonade stand to raise funds to create and adopt a spot for Alpine Estates, the entire city council extends its sincerest congratulations and appreciation on this memorable occasion and expresses our hope for your continued success and growth. We're very proud of you. If you could come up one at a time, please accept your citation and stand right here with your passport and take a picture. The last time I told a five, six, seven, or eight-year-old she could punch me, I had a bruise on my belly for about three weeks. My name is Clark, can I have a copy of your agenda? For some reason, my phone, tablet, and wifi are not working tonight. Thank you. Okay, before we open the public hearings tonight, because I know we have something that will inspire a lot of public comment, I'm considering, if the council allows me, to hold public comments and a vote on the school contract for 2020, 2021, and 2022. Because there are some teachers here who would like to comment, and plenty of those are public on a comment, so we can vote on that, finish that and get them out of here before we start. But I think we'll be a lengthy discussion with the public about the chief's appointment. So do I have motion to spend the rules? Do I have public comments and the schools contract first this evening? So moved.
Second.
Motion second and discussion. See none, Clark, please take the lead.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Fawley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Yes. And with that, I urge any public comment on the school contract for 2020, 2021, and 2022 to cover the podium now. Name and address, as always, for the record.
Hello, I'm Mrs. Hopkins, President of Cranston Teachers Alliance. And you can see this big smile on my face. We spend a lot of time at meetings and very late. So we greatly appreciate, first of all, that you had your finance committee that was originally supposed to be at the beginning of the month of August, because we had a very strict deadline to try to get things in order before we leave our school. And so, and then I also greatly appreciate you taking us out of order because I think that you have a big, tough agenda tonight. So anyway, we were negotiating, as always, in good faith. And the contract really reflects that. And basically, it's really great for students and teaching and learning and teachers. And as council president, for in a set area, Cranston is a wonderful community. It has great opportunities for everyone, and the beauty of our city is our schools. And everyone works really hard. We have a lot going on in those schools, and I look forward to bringing a lot of those initiatives to fruition. So I ask you to please support this three-year collective bargaining agreement that I represent almost 1,250 people in the city. A thousand of those, a little over a thousand of those are the teachers. So thank you very much for your time.
Anything else to speak on the teachers' collective bargaining agreement? There being none, that portion of the meeting is now closed. On note, I will open a public comment after we discuss the teachers' contract. I would say a motion to approve the teachers' contract. So moved. I have a motion by council member Vivekio, and I have a second by council member Hopkins. Discussion and discussion on the current teachers' contract as force. See none, Clark, please state the law on the contract.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Fawley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Vickian?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you to the public for allowing me to respect the time that our teachers and our teachers administration put into this contract along the needle. First, we do appreciate it. With that, I will welcome up the floor to public comment on any docket that matters this evening. So anyone who wishes to speak on anything on the docket tonight? Now is your time. And I will ask that, as people filter out, everyone standing, could you please take a seat, per fire code?
Yay! Doing docket at a time, friends, right?
You can come to the mic, Colleen, and whatever you have. Name and address for the record, though. We know who you are without everybody does.
Thank you. Pauline DeRosa, 97 Cypress Drive. Good evening, President, for you and council members. This is a slightly edited version of the email I sent to the city council on August 2nd, the topic of the proposed lease agreement between Mayor Fund and Crown Castle Towers. We need to build a cell tower in a city located beneath 493 Phoenix Avenue. City of, uh, Gunn City Alliance is in full opposition to this lease agreement, being what it would mean in terms of the destruction to this pristine fires and land, and the inevitable displacement of wildlife. We understand blasting may be required in order to remove rock out crappies. To destroy the property in question for a yearly lease amount of $36,000 seems careless. The approval of this resolution could open the door for additional cell towers in Western Cranston. At what point would it end? The city council must not support this type of legislation under any circumstances. I quote the council's statement from the Solar Performance Standards 2018, which should also apply to this case. In my quote, "The council has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to protect and means the role and character of Western Cranston," end of quote. We hold you accountable for filing through what stated in urging to veto the above resolution by Mayor Fund. A resolution showing blatant disregard for our authority in effort to thwart any opposition by not including the Conservation Commission Office, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pauline. As a point of information, when that comes up tonight, I'm gonna ask that we continue. I've requested the developer come in and give us a full explanation of how they plan to do any work on the site, far be it removing trees, blasting, because we've heard the same anecdotal evidence. You have and we'd like a full plan from the developer on what they're gonna do to that site before we even hear it tonight. So we're gonna continue this next month, and they've said they'll be here to answer our questions. So to the council members, please have your questions ready for the September meeting, where they will be here for a review. Additional notes of the public to speak on any docket matters?
Hi, good evening, Title 178 Lippin Albino. I'm here as well to talk about the cell tower. I'm glad to hear it's being continued. The contractor's coming in to give you a much less better review than what the administration gave you. Many men know this city property existed until this came along. It's, well, it's Western Cranston's hidden gems. It turns out we got quite a few of those in Western Cranston. I was up on top of our trail today. We're sitting on this, we're sitting on this property. And someone's using the book as a dump to their lawn furniture. Unfortunately, this land is not, it's unmarked, it's forgotten. People either abuse it, abuse it. And the administration's a much better job of taking care of what we do, protecting it from people, ORVs, dumpers, which is rampant in Western Cranston, unfortunately. And this type of counter, open under contracts. If you're really optioning the due diligence investigation, it gives them the right to do whatever they want, to find out if the cell tower up there. The city has yet by grants less than its employees, agents, contractors, engineers, surveyors, the right on isn't to construct or use a temporary pedestrian, mutual access road on a public road. It's like rumor of bulldozers and chainsaws or whatever, and build it red. It's about 30 feet wide. We have no idea where. It's not located anywhere, just this vague little map that the administration gives. And unfortunately, this is typical of this administration, how they treat public land. It's not just this property. It's what they tried to do on late night road with the anchorage move for that connection property. And I hope the city council will put a stop to this and treat, make sure all the lands are treated, really should be treated respectfully.
Good evening, Robert Wilson, 114 Newfale Drive. I would just respectfully request if I could defer a comment until we get to the council president communications section of the agenda.
Yes, I'll ask for an update on your works in the administration, and if you have any update at that time, we'll take the information that you have.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello again. My name's Debbie Flutman. I live at 51 Lindsay Lane in Cranston. And I have just two short comments. The first one is in reference to Roman numeral 12 on your agenda that reads miscellaneous business on clerk's desk. I believe that that might violate the Open Meetings Act, and I'd like for somebody on the council to look into that. I think I saw it last month, too. If people don't know what's on the agenda, that they can't show up. So I would appreciate if you'd look into that.
I don't believe there's any miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk tonight. That's why it's an empty section, but I would defer to the clerk at this point.
Through the chair, whenever we do have miscellaneous business, it's always posted on the docket and for compliance with the open meeting law. Initially, it's a follow-up on a previous matter, such as when we were waiting for the executed contract from fire. We keep it on there, but it's always listed. If there's nothing there, there's nothing that would be discussed.
Thanks for the clarification. I didn't understand that. I thought it was just whatever was hanging on your mound on your desk that's gonna come up. The other thing I'd like to speak to again is the appointment of Stephen McIntosh to the fire chief's position. And I just want to reiterate my, my point of view that I don't support him for this very, very special position in our city. You know, you've identified the need for diversity in our city by forming the Diversity Commission. And I would like to see that the new fire chief, whoever it is, also supports the need for diversity. And not someone who was heard at that public meeting, that Diversity Commission public meeting, who was heard to say that Providence doesn't utilize the same hiring criteria as Cranston, and they have suffered in the quality of their firefighters. And I think that Cranston deserves better than that. And if he doesn't remember that he said that, then that's an issue as well. It was at a public meeting. So I'm just asking you to please reconsider and vote no for his appointment.
Good evening again, Dana Holgren, 161 Farmcrest Avenue. A couple of things I wanted to address in this meeting. I understand there's a couple of issues coming up regarding salaries. Quite honestly speaking for myself, over the last year and a half, or two years that I've been coming to these meetings, regardless of differences of opinion I may have, I have gone to have tremendous respect for the time and energy that you all have put into this office. And I, on the face of it, do not oppose at all an increase in salary for city council members. My concern is more the context of the possibility of that vote in the absence of a living wage for the city council, in the absence of sufficient funding for, for other city departments such as schools, youth-related programs, and so forth. I'm concerned about that, as well as for the proposed salary increase for mayor. Again, I would support looking at, looking at a study of some sort to come up with comparable salaries in Rhode Island for comparable communities. And I think it should be put to the voters in terms of process. That's my personal two cents on the salary issue. I'm also concerned about cell towers, but I understand that's going to be put forward. I'm concerned about, I do wish to speak to the issue regarding the potential hiring of Mr. McIntosh for fire chief, but I'm also concerned about statements that were made by Mayor Fund regarding an incident at Budland Pool at the end of June this summer. I understand it was a difficult incident. I personally think we need to look at supervision in the pool. I don't think teenagers can be expected to supervise other teenagers. I think that's a part of a bitter conversation. But I'm concerned about Mayor Fund's public statements calling youth from Providence punks, trying to sort of, using divisive rhetoric, and in a way that really inflamed public comment on social media. So I would really hope that leadership in Cranston takes a step back and looks at using more temperate language with incidents like that. And again, as I spoke before in front of the finance committee, the same folks are assembled here. I strongly support the firefighters in Cranston and in other communities, tremendous public safety workers. Regarding Mr. McIntosh's denials, the best-case scenario, again, there are several people who are in the room in front of the finance committee, including Mr. Jim Vincent, who was the president of the Providence branch of the NAACP, who heard comments said regarding the dumbing down of, the potential dumbing down of Cranston's fire department, like Providence. The language Ms. Flutman used as well, that the quality of firefighters might suffer if we looked at diversity in hiring. This is absolutely unacceptable in a city which claims it is committed to increasing diversity in hiring. It reflects whatever word you want to use for the culture that is reflected. It reflects a culture that prioritizes business as usual. And if we want to have change, if we want to have diversity in our fire department, in our city hall, we need to change the way we are doing hiring, not only recruiting police officers, firefighters, but also who we are promoting. So I strongly urge the city council to vote against that nomination. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. As a point of information, the two salary ordinances that have been discussed are going to go to a hearing on September 7th. So I urge everyone to come back if they have comments on that, and let your voice be heard. At that point, we will be receiving an analysis done by council attorney and our council budget analyst, who did in fact go look at other cities and towns and have a presentation to give the council on that night. So I urge you to come back to the committee meetings and listen to that presentation with us. Anyone else to speak on any docket matters? See none, that portion of the meeting is now closed. Moving on to resolutions, I recognize council member Lamis Apagas.
Thank you, council president. Um, there is a resolution that I'm presenting here before the council, recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, September 15 through October 15. I invite everyone on, hopefully, October 3rd in the evening here at city hall, where we will be celebrating the Hispanic Heritage Month. There's many events happening throughout the state, and I'm extremely happy in fact that we're bringing that here to Cranston as well. With that being said, the resolution, if I can read the resolution quickly, if I may?
You may. It is your resolution, or it is yours?
So the resolution reads, yes, Congress by the public law 100-402, as amended, has designated September 15 through October 15 as National Hispanic Heritage Month, where we recognize the many Americans of Hispanic descent who have made outstanding contributions to our nation, and where as National Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the spirit and accomplishments of Hispanic Americans everywhere, and where as the cultural traditions of the Hispanic American community to have made remarkable impact on American society and on the city of, and in the city of Cranston, and where as educational opportunities are helping new generation work toward success, and many Hispanic Americans operate thriving small businesses. And where as Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the contributions of Latinos as a vital part of Rhode Island's rich diversity by contributing significantly to all aspects of the new life, including education, medicine, commerce, agriculture, public service, technology, and the arts. And where as the city of Cranston proclaims September 15, 2019, through October 15, 2019, as National Hispanic Heritage Month, and where as the city of Cranston calls upon public officials, educators, edutarians, all the people of this great city of Cranston to observe this month with appropriate ceremony activities and programs. And where as the city of Cranston congratulates the Hispanic Heritage Committee of Rhode Island, Art and the Celebration of the 31st Anniversary, that commemorates and celebrates Rhode Island's diverse Latino contributions. Now there be it resolved that the Cranston City Council does hereby recognize September 15, 2019, through October 15, 2019, as Hispanic Heritage Month. With this resolution, given the fact that the next city council meeting will not be until the end of September, that it was only appropriate to present this resolution at the end of this month and that way celebrate again Hispanic Heritage Month here in the city of Cranston throughout your seat.
Hey, Councilmember August, this is a good initiative. Councilmember, Councilmember Hopkins?
Thank you, President. I'm asking Councilmember August if I could be a sponsor with her as well on that resolution. How about this, any council members want to be a sponsor, hold your hand up. Nice and high. Don't want to be on it. It looks like, and I'm gonna speak for Councilmember Brady to see if she also requests to be on it, so we're gonna go now, you know, and support this with you, Councilmember August. This is a, a good, a good thing to do. It's a good way to drive engagement with your community and our community in Cranston. I look forward to being here on October 3rd and celebrating with you and all the people who come here to celebrate a great heritage. So thank you for being on this council, and thank you for really working hard and taking the idea of everything, really helping us, helping make sure we, we keep doing the right thing.
Thank you. Thank you to all the members of the council for co-sponsoring. I welcome everyone who's here today, and we'll make sure that we announce that throughout social media and everywhere else.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Do you need a motion to approve?
Motion approved in a second. To the Herald, but sitting on the audience, once we get to date certain, I would ask that you put it in the, in the what's happening section of the Cranston chatter section of the Herald, that way we can continue to share it and get the, get the word out. Matt, please take the lead.
Mr. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. August?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
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 Yes. Moving on to the finance committee, council vice presidents. First item we had, just a little while ago, advice and consent of the mayor's appointment of Stephen McIntosh as the Cranston Fire Chief. Want to contain most of them again. Do I have a motion in a second? I have a motion approved, do I have a second? I have a second. Under discussion, before we go to council member discussion, there was a lot of talk at the prior meeting about comments made by deputy chief at a diversity hearing. I'm gonna put Director Oration on the floor to give us an update as to some of those comments in the finance committee.
Should we move on to the president for you and I?
Into the mic, Director Oration.
Members of the council, my name is Susan Oration. I'm the director of personnel. I also serve as the chairperson of the Diversity Commission, and I was in attendance at the July 8th meeting. I had an opportunity to review the written minutes of the meeting, which were drafted by the secretary, so right so. And I also had an opportunity to listen to a recording from that meeting. And I spent quite a bit of time comparing the accuracy of the minutes to the actual statements that were made in the recording. So just as a backdrop, the minutes reflect a conversation that involved a discussion of the fire department's requirement that applicants possess a ENT cardiac license. And so there was a discussion about maybe eliminating that in Cranston, because perhaps it is an obstacle for some people in applying. And then there was a discussion about interest in general in applying for positions within the fire department. I'm gonna read from the minutes, and then I'm gonna read you the summary that I took from the audio recording. So Mr. Vincent challenged the need for Cranston to require the cardiac license, as the city of Providence was able to identify it as a barrier eliminated. The Providence Department has seen, has since then seen an increase in people of color in the department. Then the minutes quote Deputy Chief McIntosh as stating, Cranston did not want unqualified people joining the department, and added that the city of Providence's police and fire departments have suffered in the quality of their work since diversifying. Secretary Sow reminded the commission that removing socioeconomic barriers and diversifying workforce does not mean compromising on quality and high expectations, and also has multiple benefits to the community through building trust, establishing role models in diverse communities, along with increasing jobs in the economy. So I reviewed the minutes of the meeting, and then I listened to the audio recording of the meeting. The exchange between Mr. Vincent and acting chief McIntosh was only a couple of minutes in length. And essentially, Mr. Vincent articulated his belief that we need to do well in Cranston, we need to get results, we need to do, take action like Providence and Central Forest has taken. And in reaction to that statement, and this is almost verbatim, it's kind of hard to write down, translate exactly what was said, but in response to that, acting chief McIntosh stated, what has Providence done that we haven't besides lowering the standards? He then stated, Providence reduced the requirements to less than a high school graduate. Mr. Vincent disagreed that lowering the standards would cause a department to be worse, and he said that Providence is no worse than any other department in the state. And that was really the end of the comments. There was, at no point did he state that Providence had suffered or that the quality of the workforce in Providence of Central Falls was in any way inferior as a result of some of the changes that those departments have made.
Thank you, Director. Moving on to the appointment, Director Purlo.
Yes, Council President and members of the city council, Mayor Fung is putting forth the nomination of Stephen McIntosh as the next Cranston Fire Chief. Chief McIntosh started his fire service in Secoak in 1975, became a Cranston firefighter in 1984, attained his fire science degree from C.C.R.I. in 1990, was promoted in 19, excuse me, in 2000 to lieutenant, to 2006 to captain, to 2009 to hazmat captain, and to deputy chief in fire marshal in 2011, where he was in that role for eight years until he was promoted to assistant chief in 2019 with the retirement of Chief McKenna. Mayor Fung and the entire administration support Chief McIntosh so heartily, believe he is the right person to lead the Cranston Fire Department.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions on advice and consent. Councilmember Vargas?
I would, I would just ask if we have a recording of the conversation or the exchange that took place in the Diversity Commission meeting in question, we should, we should listen to it. I mean, that's the easiest way to get it.
I agree. So I'll allow, as you find it on your recording, we'll allow the questions to take place, and then when you're ready, unless you're ready now. All right? Make sure the mic is on pretty nice and close so everybody can hear. Council President, Deb?
This is Iona. I want the kids in Cranston that would rather join the gang because it's quick return investment. They can make a hundred bucks in a day. So if these kids aren't seeing themselves in the job, they're not going to fight. They're not even going to think that they could be a firefighter.
So that's why we have to work at it at any cost to do something for 10, 20 years with no results.
Jim Vincent?
This is crazy. It's insanity. We've got to stop it. Declare victory. Move on. So excuse me. What is the problem with that? Yes, well, there's a difference. It's decided already in the states. But no, they would, they would, they would disagree with that. They would just say, I don't know what the standard of type problems would reduce the requirements to less than our high school graduates would apply to the job for that. So I would disagree on read away whether the law and the law. I'm not sure. Why now? They have had results, and I would argue that their department is no worse than any department in state. I don't know. I don't look too good. I judge that. I just know that you can't have a city with 30% of your color and zero five points of color. That's ridiculous. It's absurd. Has to stop. Has to stop. Has to stop. We're going to have problems. It's a puzzle. But I tell people that they can't believe it. They think I'm making it up. It's a mess. Can't. You got to pull a button.
I think we should also look at Boston, too. And I think we should also look at Boston, too. They've been extremely successful.
That's pretty much the end of that.
That's the end of the?
You want me to repeat that part? Yeah. Sure.
So fortification, the first person on the video was Iona Cruton. The second person on the recording, however, was Jim Vincent, head of the ACP. The third person was Deputy Chief McIntosh. Reply from Jim Vincent, and then a reply from McIntosh, and then the meeting continued.
This is crazy. It's insanity. We've got to stop it. Declare victory. Move on. So excuse me. What is the problem with that? Yes, well, there's a difference. It's decided already in the states. But no, they would, they would, they would disagree with that. They would just say, I don't know what the standard of type problems would reduce the requirements to less than our high school graduates would apply to the job for that. So I would disagree on read away whether the law and the law. I'm not sure. Why now?
So there's some eyes. It says, Jim Vincent asked the question. The answer came from Deputy Chief as to what we could do to drive diversity and what Providence has done different. The answer was, we can lower our standards as they did, and it sounded like he gave a historical fact, but at one point, Providence lowered their requirements to have no test scores or not have a high school GED. So I would ask the Deputy Chief to come up and, and just let us know if that's what he said. It sounded like it did, but I'd like to hear you confirm that for the record. Yes, opportunity to listen to this live for this point of the tape. I can now comment that that's accurate. I made a statement based on historical data, something I remembered early in my career during a recruitment process, that that happened. I'm not sure if that's the current, I don't think that's the current standard now. I'm not sure what their standards, hiring practices are. But I did state that historically, at a period in time in the future past, standards have changed. And for the record, you do know all of Cranston's standards as the comment came through in this meeting, that you were all aware of Cranston's hiring practices. Thank you, Deputy Chief. Before, any, any questions from the panel? Councilmember Vargas?
It's not a question. It's just more of, just a statement, if I, if I may. So I was present at that meeting in July, and thank you for playing the recording, Director. I have, I have to say, do we have a lot of work to do as far as city goes to diversify and not just the fire department, but to diversify employees that work for city hall? We do. Do we still have to do a lot of work to diversify the police department to reflect the demographics of the city that it serves? I think we do. School committee is out of our separate body than it is the council, but I still think that there is work there to do as well. I think we also need to start working at the cardiac licensing and have a conversation there with the fire department, and how do we make sure that we continue to hire high qualified candidates throughout the entire city as well as for the Cranston Fire Department? I recently sent a link over to the Diversity Commission, to members of the Diversity Commission, and in the link it was an op-ed that I believe was written maybe 2015, 2016. And I believe it was a collaboration of an op-ed to the Projo by the mayor of the city of Central Falls and the fire department chief. I'm going to say his, his name was Chief Bradley. I'm not sure if he's still there or not. But it was pretty much a way to increase diversity in the city of Central Falls. Now, Central Falls is of every diversity, but yet it also had a problem where it didn't have enough people of, of color to serve on the fire department. One of the things that they started doing was how do we make sure that we, we get qualified candidates? And what they did was that they advertised social media, paper, flyers, thorough businesses, and expos and so forth, and got the word, got the word out, and I believe the schools as well. They also added a point system to anyone who also had spoke, I'm sorry, a second language. And I believe they also added points if you were currently serving in the military or veteran status. And lastly, what they also did was that they added a, a person of color as the part of the interview panel. It was, I believe, an outside maybe firefighter to the panel of interviews. So you can kind of get away from the, I know a guy that knows a person and so forth, or I know a woman that knows someone that works, that works in the, in the department. These are all things that I think, sitting on the Diversity Commission and being a woman and a councilman of color, that I look forward to working with, not only the fire department, but everyone. And so I have great respect for our firefighters here in Cranston, to anyone who serves in public safety. And I can only say is that I look forward to continuing to work with the fire department. We've had two Diversity Commission meetings, and the fire department has been represented at both commission meetings. As a matter of fact, in the email that I believe Susan sent over today, which was an email that was forwarded to us based on Mr. McIntosh saying that he actually stated otherwise, he also mentioned that he would actually be sending, that there would be a representation from the fire department at the next Diversity Commission meeting. So for me, although we're not going to have a recruitment within the next week, two, three, I, I look forward to working with the fire department again with everyone to make sure that we diversify our departments. And I will be voting in favor of Mr. McIntosh's confirmation appointment as chief. But I look forward, chief, if your confirmation passes this evening, to work with you on the, in the city, in the city administration, the human resource in general, to make sure that we recruit more people of color that look like the demographics that are happening and growing in our city, and not just to check the box and hire one more person and say, we've, we have one. But to work with you in ways to also establish a relationship with our community. Our community, you can't just go to the community and say, we're doing a recruitment drive, and I know it takes two, right? The person also want, is going to have that desire to be a firefighter, or a police officer, or so forth. But we can also do a due diligence and continue to do a due diligence in ways that we can establish a relationship with the community, whether it's starting at the high school level, whether it's putting together an informational workshop as Director Purlo had also mentioned. Those are ways to start engaging in the community here in the city of Cranston. As just recently, I, I read a resolution on Hispanic Heritage Month. I welcome the fire department, the police department, all city employees and residents and business owners to join us on that day. That is a way to establish relationships also with the community. Not to say that relationships have not ever been established to begin with, but I think that that is definitely a start, a foot forward. And so again, I will be voting in favor of your confirmation, but I do look forward in working with you to diversify the Cranston Fire Department, which is, is not the best fire department in the city, in the state. But if I can be of any help at all, I'm definitely here to work with you and to make sure that we can, again, we're fully, not just again with the fire department, but with, with everyone. So, thank you.
Any additional comments? Councilmember, somebody goes. Oh, sorry, Councilmember, we didn't see a hand up.
I've been on the city council for nine years, and I think for nine years, various ones of us have been talking about this diversity issue, and particularly in the fire department. I remember John Lanning particularly talking about it. And nothing has improved. It's always, gee, we're trying, but hey, nobody applies. And so to try to deal with that problem, I was concerned to try to do something concrete about it. And I read the editorial that you referred to, and that editorial, it mentioned giving extra points for speaking a foreign language. I don't think it was any foreign language. It was a foreign language that was commonly spoken in the community. So I researched that, and I proposed that you get an extra five points if you spoke Spanish, because the, according to the census, that's the only non-English language that is spoken by more than 5% of the population of Cranston. And that was, what is?
Councilmember Stychos?
Yep.
The fact that you're talking about a resolution that's not before the body that was defeated really has no bearing.
Oh, it does. If you hang with me, I'll get there.
Well, unfortunately, I can't hang with you on this because it does not allow for the council members to have an open and honest discussion about that item because it's not before us. So I cannot then reply to you about that five point ordinance and why it was flawed and why it failed, Miss Counsel's 7-2. So if you'd like to talk about the chief and why you're not talking about when it failed 7-2. Well, I can't bring up any facts about it because it's not before us tonight.
That's really, um.
I have to return.
The matter is that, yeah, the proposal was endorsed by the mayor through his director of administration, and I withdrew it the first time on his assertion that a personnel rule would be passed, proposed by him. He was the personnel director at the time, acting. And that never happened. So that's, that's yet another example of how nothing has happened concrete. And we've been, are trying to change the situation because our workforce should reflect our population. So now we come to the nomination of Mr. McIntosh. And the back and forth on the standards is upsetting because at the very minimum, it represents a lack of sensitivity to the issue by Mr. McIntosh. Because when things like affirmative action are raised, regardless of saying, the first line of defense is always, we don't want to lower the standard. That's when I was on the school committee and proposed an affirmative action committee, that was the immediate response, we don't want to lower the standards. And that's, that's not the issue. The issue is, what are the roadblocks? Why aren't blacks, Hispanics, Asians, women, why aren't they applying to the fire department? That's the issue we ought to be aiming at. Not talking about, oh, we can't immediately, we can't lower the standards. We ought to make sure that the standards are appropriate to the job. Now personally, if someone showed up at my house and I was having a heart attack or my wife was having a heart attack, I want them to be able to speak my language. Now, that I think is a qualification, but we're saying, oh, that's not a qualification. Well, no one says, oh, we're lowering standards by not requiring people to speak Spanish who come to the, who work for the fire department. So we have to get at why people aren't applying. And we have to, that's a serious issue. It's not some fluff discussion. And when I asked Mr. McIntosh tonight what his plans were, he didn't have any plans. He didn't have any suggestions. We ought to do this. We ought to do that. Other than he was going to listen to other people, which is a good start, but it's not enough for a fire chief. So I will be voting for Mr. McIntosh. I see in his comments about standards, a refusal to get to the problem and to acknowledge that we have a problem. And I'm, I'm also upset that there's, there's no plan other than what we've already done before, which doesn't work, other than what Mr. Purlo said, which I think is a definite positive step in the right direction. And we have to think about new ways of doing it, and I applaud you for doing that. And I'm sorry that I can't vote for you for fire chief, but that's, that's another matter. So I will be voting for nomination, and frankly, I've So, I will be voting for the nomination, and frankly, I've had it with people not addressing the issue of minorities in the, in the fire department, addressing it head-on, and coming up with attempted solutions. I think it's, it's really interesting that Steve Laffey was frequently at odds with the fire department, and he's the only one who has come up with an idea and implemented it to try to solve the problem. The idea didn't work, the waiving of the, of the loan for the course, the EMT course, but he tried something. And we need to start trying things and not, and get off this, this discussion about lowering standards, and to make sure the standards meet the job, and not anything more. Thank you. Counselor McCauley.
I'll be brief. I think it's extremely disrespectful to be referring to this man as mister, when he's worked over thirty-five years and deserves to be called deputy chief. And, and, and secondly, mind if I have a heart attack, I want that person responding to have a cardiac C license. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley. Counselor President, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel President. Yeah, I think what I'm concerned about is how dangerously close we came to really bashing this man's reputation over a misstatement or a misquote of something that he said. Thank God there was an audio recording, because what we were told was said was totally different than what we heard on the recording, and it scares me. This issue, you know, we've been trying to do this, I've been here with Steve for all nine years, and I know it's frustrating, but I've, I've said it for years, I don't understand why we can't recruit in the schools. We have a vocational school in this city, which is second to none. We have so many programs available, we have a pretty diverse student body at Cranston East, as Counsel Hopkins has pointed out many times. So, why can't we get through to the kids? And why can't we get people to take those courses and get ready to be able to take the jobs? I, I agree, there's a disconnect there, but to blame it all on the, on the fire chief, we need, we need a personnel department. We have Ms. Raisin as our personnel director. Now, we have a female personnel director who is very committed to trying to reckon this problem, but the problem, it's a two-way street. We need people to really want to do these jobs, and we've seen, it's not just the minorities that, community that doesn't want to do these jobs, the numbers are down dramatically for everyone. We dropped hundreds, people don't want to become policemen and firemen because they're getting in harm's way and nobody respects the job they do. So, we, we need some cultural changes, that's for sure, but it go, it's a two-way street. I think we need to respect the job that people do. I think that Chief McIntosh has done, done a very good job. He's, you know, it's, it's not his job alone to, to solve this problem, that's why we have a personnel department, a director of administration, who have a lot of experience in this area, and I think they can do quite a bit to help. We didn't have a personnel director until two years ago. So, we were a city of six hundred employees with no personnel director for a while, and that's just not an acceptable position to be in. So, I think that we, we can do more, but you, it's hard to change, you can't just fire the entire workforce and say, "All right, we're gonna make sure that it aligns better with our demographics." If people don't want to take the jobs, we have a problem. And I, and you're right, we need to work at it, but to say that, you know, we failed, we need to go out, we need to get some people to go to the schools, go up to the community and do the job, but we have to speak the truth and not make things up, because we don't, you know, we want to make a change and we want to use false narratives to do it. So, I, I would support Chief McIntosh, and I, and I think he'll do a good job in this area.
Counselor Donigan, then Counselor Paploskas, then Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Counsel President. Deputy Chief McIntosh, I voted no in finance committee, and you're aware of that for anyone else that wasn't here. I voted no because of the testimony that we heard from the public. I was hoping that we would hear the actual audio, actually, I was hoping for transcript, we got the audio, which is even better, so, thank you, Detective. I would be lying if I said I wasn't disappointed with some of your answers regarding how to address the lack of diversity in the department during the finance committee hearing. I would have liked to have heard more concrete plans and ideas going forward. I understand that it's not, that issue doesn't start and end with you, that's a systemic issue that all of us, everyone needs to be brought to the table and then work on, so that's, doesn't just fall on the shoulders of the fire chief, or the police chief, or the personnel director, it's something we all have to work on. I voted no in committee because of what was presented in testimony. You did say, when we had our conversation in committee, that you were committed to hearing and going forward with the diversity commission, and listening to their ideas and trying to implement them, and I have no reason not to take you at your word for that. So, I appreciate, you know, honestly, I appreciate you being here tonight. I just kind of wanted to, you deserve to know, and my rationale behind the way I voted, and my thought process there, so...
Counselor member Paploskas, then Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Counsel President. You know, the first time I met Chief McIntosh was back in 2012, before I was on the council, and he was, I believe, was teaching fire safety to children at George J. Peters School. That was before I was on the council, and then, you get on the council and you get on safety services and you get to know Chief McIntosh, who comes to all our meetings, and know what he does in the fire marshal's office, and how he and the members of his department really work hard every day to keep our city safe. Chief McIntosh has done a great job in your position as fire marshal, you've done a great job in your position, safety services representative for, for the fire department, and to be honest, if I thought you had one prejudicial bone in your body, I wouldn't vote for you. And I know that you're an outstanding person and will do a great job leading this department. To address one of the issues, one of my colleagues, Counselor Fervicchio, brought up, I was at summer camp at Boy Scouts two weeks ago, and one of the executives came down to our campsite, and they want to start a fire explorer program in the city. So, I know that would be in the schools, and it would be outreach, and that may be a way to get children interested in becoming firefighters, that are in the city and can follow through with that as a career. Other than that, I wholeheartedly support you, Chief, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
You're up, Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, President. First of all, I want to reiterate some of the words I said in the committee meeting earlier, thanking Chief McKenna for his years of service, and at the same time, thanking the chief for standing up, for his friend and Deputy Chief McIntosh for this appointment. And we stood here a month ago praising Chief McKenna for the work that he did, and we truly believed in him as a leader. And he stood here tonight and recommended a predecessor, somebody to follow in his footsteps. I'm sure he would give us positive advice, knowing the gentleman who has been submitted, his name has been submitted tonight. I thought that my colleague to my right made a tremendous comment when he said that it's not on the shoulders of the fire chief to go out and diversify his own department. It's all of our job. It's not just his job. So, that thought in mind, I sent a comment, a question to a former student of mine, and he responded to me, he's a leading member of the Cambodian community. And he said to me, "Hi, Mr. Hopkins, I was wondering if the city of Cranston is hiring? I've been looking for a job in the labor department." I responded to, I said, "How about the fire department?" And his answer back to me was, "I'm all for it, what are the qualifications?" There's the problem, we haven't communicated to the minority groups in our city what they need to do to become firemen in our city. There's one phone call to one former student at Cranston East who would love to be a fireman, he's a member of the Cambodian community. So, I think we all have to get on board with this, we all have to ask minority candidates to submit their name, to show them the qualifications, and then we can help the chief to diversify that department. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hopkins. Everyone spoke once, I'll have the last word on this. So, first off, Deputy Chief, I kind of want to apologize to you and your family for what you had to go through during the finance committee meeting, and I'd like to thank Director Raisin for having a recording of the minutes of that meeting, so we could hear exactly what happened in an openly transparent and honest way. You know, diversity and inclusion is something that I've heard about on this council as long as I've been a member of it. That's why I reenacted the diversity commission made up of members of our community, led by Director Personnel, with our chief, with our police chief, to look at these things and really figure out why there is a stigma for people wanting to be police and firemen. In the first two weeks, we've had some hard truths come out, some real hard truths, and I urge any council members who think that that's doing nothing to go to some of those meetings and listen to the community talk about the challenges in their own respective environments. The challenge of the Hispanic space, all people of color face. There are real conversations happening at diversity commission, and my hope is as we extend the deadline for it, we come up with some real solutions, not one-trick ponies, meant to add a few headcounts here or there, real, sustainable change. A lot of people like to say, "Diversity and inclusion, let's just hire more people, let's figure out the problem." This is not something that happened over the last year, two years, three years. This is a systemic problem in our country, in our society, and we're taking a hard look at how do we can solve it together in Cranston. Working together is the only way we're gonna change the stigma, change the problem, and share the concept of diversity. That's phase one. Phase two is how do we drive diversity in other areas of our city government? How do we look to work with more diverse vendors? How do we drive diversity in our purchasing? This is not one thing. This is how do we change the systemic fundamental issues in our society and drive diversity? Been one of my champions as long as I've been the council president, and will be as long as I'm involved with politics in this city and this state. We need to drive diversity and inclusion, and that's the way it is. So, I will wholeheartedly support Deputy Chief McKenna to become the chief tonight, and if you'd like to say some words now after the vote, it's entirely up to you, Deputy Chief. Thank you for the endorsements. I'm humbled, really. To reiterate a couple of things that have been mentioned already, going forward, some things were brought to my, dropped my memory, the director will probably concur with this during the qualification process, before you're here tonight. I was asked some questions about where are we at, how do we get there? Cranston West, I'm not picking on any school, Cranston West has a pathways program, it's for different trades, there's a medical pathway up there. We have already endorsed candidates, we've reached out to them, that's a continued effort, because really, what are we providing the Cranston Fire Department? A medical service. We're first responders for medical emergencies in the home and the street, and businesses. We've, we've, we've reached out, we're going to continue to reach out to the program in Cranston East as well, getting interest at the high school level for students that want to continue this pathway. We had already, in the past, about a year or so ago, I wanted to gather, I wasn't involved in the conversation, but I was aware of the conversation. We were already, at that point, explored a firefighter explorer program. We haven't launched it yet. It's, there's an effort there, will that give us younger people to show an interest in our job? During the qualification process to be an EMT, there is what's known as ride-along service, ride-along time. We, Cranston, provides ride-along time. On a routine basis, we get EMT students, they have to do X, Y, W, it gets possibly ten to fifteen to twenty hours of time on a rescue as part of their process. Not only do we get students who are in the EMT process, we also have doctors and nurses that are continuing their education, that they come to us and we provide the opportunity for them to reach out and get this, this additional training. So, these are areas that we already participate in, and we'll continue to do so. Thank you, Deputy Chief. With that, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, and with that, I introduce you to Chief McKenna. I'm sorry, Chief McIntosh, I don't like, I just, I keep on a poor chief McKenna back, I'm sorry. Chief McKenna has big shoes to follow in, so his name is gonna resonate in this halls for a long time. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Counsel President, next we have something simple, the resolution authorizing tax, real estate tax abatements. That's an emotional proof, so moved, a second? Second, motion second under discussion, seeing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next, we have a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements, it's approved about an hour ago. That's an emotional proof, so moved, emotional proof, second under discussion, seeing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Next, we have a resolution authorizing tangible tax abatements. That's an emotional proof.
Motion, so moved, motion a second under discussion, seeing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 We have, she says we have a resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements, that is, that was only approved earlier. So, we have emotional proof of real estate and tax abatements from the September, from the August meeting earlier this evening.
Okay.
Emotional proof, so moves, second under discussion, seeing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 And we have a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements for August. That's an emotional proof, motor vehicle tax abatements for August.
Second. So, I guess, an emotional second under discussion, seeing none, please take the roll.
So I guess, motion a second, under discussion, seeing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Next we have a Resolution Authorizing Tangible Tax Abatements for August. That's an emotional proof, a second? So moved, emotional a second, under discussion, seeing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Next we have Tax Interest Waiver Approvals for August. Motion approved, a motion, a second? Did someone second?
Yes.
Motion a second, under discussion, seeing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. And lastly, the Tax Interest Waiver Denials for August. I'll entertain a motion to approve, so moved, a second, a motion a second, under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. And that's it. Moving on to Safety Services, Councilmember, Chair, um, Drive and Drive officers.
If you, thank you, Mr. Council President, we have three items up for approval. Uh, Class 3 Victorin liquor license Asia Gold LLC, DBA Asia Gold, 140 Hillside Road, this passed in committee.
Motion approved, a motion of a second? Second, under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have One Bella Inc., DBA The Books, uh, 640 Minnwood Ave., this passed in committee.
That's an emotional proof? Motion approved, a second? Second, a motion a second, under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. And last, we have Octane Burger Bar LLC, uh, 1,000 Chapel U. Bar, motion approved, a motion of a second? Second, a motion a second, under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Public Works Committee, which I am the interim chair, uh, there's one item before the agenda, it's the Resolution Authorizing the Mayor of the City of Cranston and its Release Agreement with Crown Castle Towers O2-2 LLC for Cell Tower fee-sav, sponsored by Mayor Fund. As the chair of both the committee and the council, I have asked the administration to bring the person before us who is asking for this, so we can ask a lot of questions we had as to how they're going to implement this, what kind of damage or crew move they're going to do to this site, uh, if there is any blasting, basically questions that we've heard from our constituents, from our neighbors, from our friends, uh, we've come up with ourselves, uh, so I'm asking this to be continued to next month's full council meeting for a hearing with the developer. Motion to continue. I have motion to hear next month's council meeting, a second, a second, under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Orders Committee, Council Vice President for the Gia.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, first we have 6-19-02, ordinance amendment of chapter 10.32, title 10 of the Code of the City of Cranston 2005, entitled More Vehicles and Traffic, Philmont Ave., Fairweather Avenue Stop, sponsored by Councilmember McCauley. Uh, we were waiting for the traffic report. Councilman McCauley, I'm under, um, thank you, Council President, uh, got numerous complaints about people, um, driving through that to Fairweather without stopping. It is adjacent to ornament school, uh, it's, it was a tremendous safety issue, if you look at my track record, I'm not one to put stop signs up, um, on a whim, this is a, a huge concern, and, uh, I ask that my fellow council people, uh, support this.
I assume you make emotional proof?
Uh, if I may.
You may. Have a second? Second, a motion approved, a second, under discussion? Seeing none, oh, Council Vice President, yes, was there traffic there with phones? I believe there was.
No, I talked to Steve Mokéi, and he was still in the process of conducting that, but he did a temporary, uh, not a temporary, he did a, uh, study update, he's in favor of it, he just hasn't put pen to paper yet, but we're good to go.
Thank you very much. So a motion approved, and a summary approved from the traffic director, uh, with that, any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Thank you. Next we have 6-19-02, pointing ordinance amendment of chapter 10.32, title 10, Code of the City of Cranston 2005, titled More Vehicle and Traffic, Stopping, Standing, Parking on Certain Streets, enumerated Decomb Street and Winton Street, No Parking, sponsored by Councilmember Vargas. Councilman Vargas, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Council President, um, presented on there, there is a traffic engineer
A motion approved, a second, under discussion?
So, um, as I just mentioned, the traffic engineer report is provided on there, uh, pretty much no parking sign directly, uh, in front of a parking, I'm sorry, of a driveway in Decomb and, uh, Winton Street, there was the resident who came here, I think in the, maybe June or July meeting, and she provided pictures as well as a letter and petition for her neighbors, saying that they were all in favor of the new parking sign.
All right, with that, any further session? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Moving on, Claims Committee, Councilwoman McCauley, Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Council President, uh, this is strictly for your perusal, it's information of purposes only, if you have any questions, feel free to let me know.
Thank you. Thank you. Public Carries, this section of the docket is open to anything anyone would like to come talk to us about. Name and address to the record, please.
Yes, please, seen the hot pan out of 130 Shale Boulevard in Cranston, Rhode Island. And recently, there was a clear cut done on Blackmore Pond by North Eastern Tree Service. I don't know if this is the tree service that Cranston uses, but I like to suggest that perhaps we should look into a service that knows the legality of not cutting trees within 50 feet of a freshwater pond. And there's a paper street that belongs to Cranston, I don't know if that is logged off or not, because I'm not a surveyor, but there is a paper street which, you know, trees are going on in, you never put a street in. If they took the trees and sold the trees, that should be Cranston's money, not what Eastern Tree Service's money. And the other thing is, is that I think I, you're out of considering, I'd like it to be in the gym, I haven't heard, perhaps, so you have a tree service capable of building themselves, because most people are not going on cleaning their own land and logging, you know, clear cuts to build a property, they hire somebody to do it. The tree service has no recourse except to deal with the client wants. So you want to put something in where the tree service can go, I'm sorry, that's illegal, I can't do that. Now, according to whoever owns the property, which, you know, you can't track down the actual person by the address in Cranston, it's just their name and Cranston as their residence. So there's a lot of things that have gone on with Instinct, this person obtained the property, they clear cut the entire section, and the law, if you take away the 50 feet from Blackmore Pond, which would be legal for anyone to cut any tree of the matter, that the law you mean is under the law according to your own ordinances. So I just wanted to make you aware that, let us who tree services may only need for trees that are probably too many years old, I can grab my hands around them, and if, if the person bought the land and robbed it, that's illegal, there's just no way anybody can, you know, do this to bear it. And so I would like it to be a discussion, and I'd love to come to another meeting when it's on the docket, and we can have more public comments by people who live in the area, because I don't know how to get it on the docket, I want him to speak tonight. Thank you, dear Cranston.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, this is the house right next to my house. I live for on the home at 175 177 Concord Avenue, and this piece of property is directly next door to my property, so as I have an interest, an amen and a butter, I will not comment on this matter in any way, all to say that if the Director of Planning has any information on this item, if you could get up and let us know now, and I would ask that one of my council members put it on the docket for their council member communication for next month, if there are any follow-ups. So, uh, got the call from the neighborhood that this had happened. Uh, yeah, they clear cut the lot, they shredded the trees, they were doing filling in the, uh, the embankment right at the water's edge, uh, this is, uh, a big problem for the property owner. DEM has gone out to the site, DEM has contacted the owners, uh, in violation of floodplain management as well as freshwater wetlands, so they are now under the strict auspices of the state, DEM for the remediation plan. So it's not gonna be a city remediation plan, but they're, they're under the auspices of the state, so that's information I have at this point. So I'm gonna leave this on the docket for next month, if you could get some more information to follow up, not because this is right next door to my house, which I still know my father lives at, but because we have a constituent complaining, and you work council from that area would like some more information.
Sure, okay.
And we'll add this to the docket in our Councilman McCauley's communications. Councilman McCauley.
Thank you, Council President, thank you Director for that explanation, um, I'll, I'll be in touch with you, um, and, um, could I just have, I, I didn't catch your address.
This is what I tried to send when I had the copy, and it's on your, you know, contact option. And I'm afraid maybe you didn't receive it, I didn't get it as well, uh, you'll definitely, um, you'll come, uh, I have some other questions, and if you have, if I have, uh, if you want to, uh, we'll talk, we'll, uh, we'll call you about this.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember McCauley for handling this issue in your way. Any, anyone else like to come speak another? Good evening, name and address to the record.
Thank you, Mr. Council President, being bursling, working in the devotee of Cranston. Uh, I'm not here for the subject you think I'm going to talk about, I'll leave that up to my, uh, Steve Mabel. Uh, point of information, very important point of information for the council and administration, I heard references earlier with regard to the diversity issue and suggestions at some prior meeting that the city should do possibly what Central Falls or Capital City did with regard to minimum standards or criteria for our gerates for the fire department. You have no say in that. That's the Rhode Island Department of Health. They have a fire education and training coordinating board, I sat on that board for twenty-seven years, I battled the state because the state always wanted to increase the requirements, which isn't a bad thing, but they wanted cities and towns to pay for it, so it was in front of me, but Providence is an outlier, and have them still there, they have their own training academy, whereas all other cities and towns use the state facility at Exeter. So I just wanted to pass that, and I, I would strongly suggest administration, fire department, contact, pump the health, become familiar with those standards, they're all rolling still on.
Good evening.
Name and address to the record, sir.
Yeah, Thomas Deteron, um, 10 Silo Drive, likely a resident of Cranston, retired Cranston firefighter, retired from State Fire Marshal's Office. I, I didn't come here to, to attempt to talk about this, but after sitting back and listening to, um, you know, when Chief McIntosh was treated, and I feel that a Cranston Fire Department was treated, I'd like to give you a little perspective as to what actually happened throughout the years, and I could speak back until 1981 when I came on the job. When I first came on the Cranseefire Department, graduate Cranston West graduate of Brown College, I decided to take the test for the Cranseefire Department. At that time, the only requirement was a high school diploma. Once you get on the department, you have to pass the EMT in the city center school for EMTC, okay? I wear that class, and I could give you all the information today because that was a job requirement. If you fail those tests, you would be off the job, if you didn't maintain that, year after year after year, you know, off the job, okay? So you learned it the right way. Then throughout the years, the city decided it was too expensive to do it that way, because other departments started to require the applicants to have these EMT and EMTC in a, just to take the test to get on the fire departments, all right? So then after that, it got to the point, we started having problems getting applicants. Now, there was 1,200 people, and I took the test, we took the test at Cranston Stadium. So the mayors, the fire chiefs, believe me, they were tired, they went to the schools in Providence, they went to schools throughout the state, they ran seminars, they over, over, over again to try to get minorities, to try to get women, year after year, it was, the guys in the job would say, you know, are we gonna get a girl, you know, are we gonna get a person, a car, are we gonna get this and that? They tried, they, you know, they make it sound like, I don't know what else you can do, I mean, really, I mean, other than start from scratch and go back to whatever it was, everybody takes the test, and then you get reared by how you're doing the test, the qualifications, and then the city pays for them to go to school, and as soon as they pass, you know, they move on. But other than that, I really, uh, need to tell you as far as that goes. But I just thought it was unfair, the way, you know, everybody blaming him and blaming the fire department for the diversity problem, like we said, this is not new, this has been going on for twenty years, we've been talking about it. So I'm telling you what the truth is, all right? So you can take it from there as a lesson, which way you decide to go, right? So one of the other things I'm here is, I did notice there was something about Mr. Fong repaving, um, I don't know, I hit on, on, um, around the calendar, for the website, I didn't see the agenda tonight, from Councilman Lady, I believe, that, I don't know if it was gonna be addressed tonight, or, uh, he, uh, he actually had an absence.
Okay, so that's fine, but you know what, we could add it to next month for you? I didn't get that, what? We could add it to next month's docket, so we meet in a month.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then we'll, and then I'll talk to you.
I just didn't know what the status was, but I'm a little bit involved, and what's been happening in the neighborhood, you know, ongoing.
But, um, 10 Silo Drive?
10 Silo. I'll call, uh, I'll call it in the morning.
Okay, very good, thank you. It's unlike you to forget to do anything. Anyone else to speak on any, um, hello? Name and address to the record, my friend.
Luke Petrucci, 121 Eastview Avenue, Cranston. Uh, there's a number of things I'd like to bring up, but the main thing I'm here about is bike path. Uh, one of the best things the city ever did was, in the state, was to open up that bike path, especially down my way, which is only a couple of streets over, which my wife and I use on a regular basis, along with my dog. Uh, a lot of people use it. Unfortunately, over the past couple of years, this thing is becoming a dumping ground. The, uh, the alcohol that's being used, there's a, there's a liquor store, and it's not there for, obviously, over on Cranston Street where people are purchasing, and using the, the bike path as a drinking location. Uh, I've called the police a number of times, but I mean, I can't always be there, there's beer cans and milk bottles and things like that all over the place.
Mattresses, tires, TV, air conditioning, calling Chris on a regular basis. Um, but you know what the biggest ones are? The city. The city decides that rather than trimming the lawn with the grass over there, we'll just slay it and kill it. So it's all dead, up and down both sides, from Uxbridge Street, uh, walk towards Providence. It's all dead. And when I asked about it, this, well, it's just easier doing it that way than taking care of it. Fences are done, the fences are falling down, businesses, they have just dumpsters right up against the white path. I mean, it's, it's embarrassing. I can go up, I can head south a little bit to West Waring. They got a sewer treatment plant over there and it looks better than us. I don't understand why we just can't build it a little better, dress it up a little bit. A lot of people use it. But the city is probably the worst culprit of all of them down there, or the mess that that place is. You should just take a walk through there and just see how it is. That's it. I know you guys want to go home sometime this week, so I'm going to end it right there. How did you get here? Thanks a little, so how did I get here? You're here. It's always good to see you in the council chambers, look. Anyone else to speak on anything? Sex and meetings now closed, elections of city officials, juvenile hearing board, Carol , uh, Gusev, I've, you know, I've known her for a long time, I've never known her last name, uh, Gusev Vivas.
Agus Vivas.
Agus Vivas. Uh, Agus Vivas. She was laughing in the face of this name. All right. Do I have motion to approve Carol to the juvenile hearing board? So moved. Uh, motion and second and a discussion. Uh, the only I'll say about Carol, she really is in tune with the youth of our society. Uh, I think she's a great addition to the juvenile hearing board, to have someone that, uh, some students who feel look more like them on the board, I think is a, is a big one. So thank you, uh, Councilman Vargas, for convincing her to serve in this kind of capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Please take the roll.
Councilwoman Staggles?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Paul?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Texas Board of Review, uh, we've had two requests, we've gone to Texas Board of Review, Keith A. Lamon, who, I butchered that one too. I apologize, Keith, for butchering your name. Uh, as alternate number one, term expires August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Motion approved. Motion approved. I have a second. Second. Excellent. Under discussion, seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Staggles?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. And Helen Peery as alternate number two, term expires January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. Motion approved. And motion to second, under discussion, seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Staggles?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. For officers, there are none. Executive Communications, important hiring, council consultant pursuit charter fifteen dot oh five is there. If anyone has any questions for the director on that report, now would be the time. I see no questions on the legal field, but are we still, we're, okay. Uh, moving on, qualified department, Captain Frank Ennis has requested to be continued in service for one year. Has Captain Flatt, uh, direct to Paris, Captain Frank Ennis met the requirements of continuing service. He has required and actually got promoted to deputy chief. Since he's been waiting for this. So, uh, I, I urge you to pass Deputy Chief's request to be, uh, continue in service with mental qualifications to be in service for one year. Yes. Motion approved. And motion approved a second, under discussion, seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Staggles?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. The next one I don't imagine, uh, rose as smoothly, probably is an explanation. Um, yes, Deputy Chief Attite, Deputy Chief Abass, who came in front of the council asking for a pension for his thirty-five years of service, May of eighteen. Uh, he incorrectly asked for a regular service pension, when in fact he should have asked for a disability pension. Uh, he had the necessary paperwork, he just failed to file it. Um, so after some back and forth, uh, he would like to be considered for a disability pension in the old Cranston fire system, which basically means, uh, for us as a city, his, uh, seventy-five percent of his salary pay gets reduced to sixty-six and two-thirds of his salary as a disability recipient. Um, we have his paperwork from his physician, we did send him to an independent medical exam, we also agreed that he does have injuries consistent with those of the fire service, so we're asking his pension be transmitted from regular disability service, regular service pension to a disability pension. Okay, so this is the point of the night where the city council becomes the pension board, and I'm going to ask that we continue this to next month, have an executive session where lawyers for the city council, lawyers for the city can present these documents to us in a, in a matter that would be, um, acceptable under personnel. Unless anyone has an objection, I believe that is the way course of action to take. Okay, I got them, Councilwoman Staggles, I'm doing good. Uh, so I would like to continue this to next month, have a full hearing, lawyers come, prepare paperwork, uh, in front of the city council, which will then be the pension review board, to discuss this change, because it's more than just a continuation service. Yes, Councilwoman Staggles? Can I, can I just suggest maybe that Dan, you send us a memo saying what you just said? Show up, because I didn't get all the math and. Yeah, I'll take care of that. All right. So we'll be prepared. Show up. I think my concern is less fiscal, because I believe the disability pension will be cheaper. Uh, it's more making sure we have all the necessary information to make the proper decision, because the council has already ruled on a initial pension in service. We're also wanting information. Yes, that would be, uh, the executive session. It would be the executive session, it's a little bit like personnel rules, so we'll do it within the body of the city council meeting, uh, probably this, at this time next month's council meeting, go to executive session with the attorneys and review it. I don't think we need a separate meeting for it, it shouldn't take one, but I want to make sure we just have the proper information to make the right decision. With that, I have police department, Major Robic, who requests to be continued in service for one year. Has Major Flack made all the necessary provisions?
He has met all the necessary requirements to be continued in service.
Okay, I have to, motion to, motion approved, I have motion approved a second. And I have motion a second to have Major Robic be continued for service for one year. Uh, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Staggles?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Under Council, where's the communications? I have nothing listed, only to say that, um, before I ask the question, I ask every month, uh, just to say that, uh, the summer has been short, feels like we went by too quick, with the children in Cranston coming back to school next week. I urge all the parents to make sure they have all the school supplies they need. Uh, and I do want to thank Councilman Vargas and, uh, One Cranston and the YMCA for doing a backpack drive last week to get needed supplies to students that need it, so. Thank you. Under York Council Communications, but.
It is, but point of correction, it was actually the back to school organization and non-profit, um, but we were collaborating with the Cranston YMCA, not one, not one thing, word there as Avenger.
So thank you for taking charge on that and really being a leader in our community. Uh, additionally, I think it's been a fun summer, I think we've done a lot of good work. I'm glad we were able to appoint a chief to the fire department, uh, after everything that's happened over the last few months with retirements and people going to work and usually going to, you know, uh, losing some talent, I think Chief McIntosh will do an excellent job and as we see the promotions come to the ranks, it'll be good to see some of the sergeants become captains and captains and move up and really see some promotions in the ranks and hopefully that will open up some at the bottom of the list, we do believe we have some diverse candidates on the list with top fifteen to seventeen candidates, so hopefully we can, uh, we can break the, break the ceiling. So I do thank you all for being part of this diversity discussion that we've engaged in as long as I've been in the council. And I do want to thank Director O'Asian for really taking the lead in the diversity commission with Deputy Director David Kiora to really take the lead on that and make sure that we're, we're seeing some action. With that, we'll move on to Councilmember Communications, Councilmember Vargas.
Uh, thank you, uh, Council President. So eighteen eighty-four, what's true, uh, just wanted to get an update, I think, uh, the administration's been waiting on providing me with updated information on a couple of proceedings.
I forgot one thing, I forgot one thing. I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
My annual monthly update on yard works, work for. Mexican stand up. The meeting that I discussed with you, uh, did not happen on Friday, that's going to happen tomorrow. Uh, basically, yeah, they actually given a permit to erect a shed on the property by Director Rodeo. Uh, there's been some information passed along that that shed, uh, may actually be being utilized as a temporary business office, which we ultimately cannot do without safety services approval. So we are talking with the attorneys tomorrow regarding what's been further on that. Uh, we also, the city just concluded the sound year testing, uh, at the residence. It took about two weeks or so. Um, so just waiting for the report from the company regarding, uh, any noise violations of, of noise ordinance. And I think that's it from my perspective. Uh, the sound individual's going to be in that meeting that you mentioned previously. Yes. Tomorrow? Yes. Um, the problem we have with this is, um, I'm glad that you're calling that meeting and thank you to the council for hearing this out and being supportive of us and what we're dealing with on a daily basis. This is just yard work service attempt to shake the bond to law. We're back here in front of the safety services committee back on February fourth. Um, and you unanimously all voted, uh, yard works down and having a temporary office structure there and trying to get a permanent office in that fashion, how to go about it a different way, which they still have not done, they haven't got the primary permits and haven't got the D E M permits and other things. So right after that February fourth, safety services meeting, come April eleventh, I believe, the city, Department of Building Inspection, so did yard works again, for bringing another temporary office structure onto the property, this time with illegal electrical hookups. It was brought on August first, this past August, a few weeks ago, to municipal court again, for the second time. And during that hearing, uh, it was, uh, delayed to, uh, it was decided that they were in compliance on all the issues, and that they descended a claim, it was going to be issued come August twenty-ninth, it'll be back in court on that day. So this Thursday. So while that's all going on, August first, in court about the second violation, I'm assuming it was right after the court date, I, I don't know, but Joe Fox, one of the leaders of yard works, then left, uh, they went after court, I'm assuming it was after court because court begins in May, I don't know, there's not much difference. And Mr. Rodeo, the building official, his name is right here, issues a permit to yard works, as Mr. Pearl said, for a prefabricated storage shed. And given the fact that Mr. Rodeo should have some knowledge about what's going on with this matter, because he's been in court on it several times, and Councilman Phil had asked him, uh, to pay close attention to yard works, and he said, I want you to focus on three things, yard works, yard works, and yard works. Um, so he's focused, uh, but, um, we're disappointed in the fact that he issued a permit for utility shed, and we have plenty of utility sheds already in the property, and he's well aware that there's an ongoing issue with technical offices and that they don't have a wetlands permit, that there's plenty of flood plain and flood issues down there, that the Rhode Island Department of Environment and Management is in the process of making the city aware of if they have them already, and that they, uh, that potentially they run the risk of potentially losing protection from food if they don't collect the components on that, as a city as a whole, and that's the path you're going down. But I, I, I really want to know, you know, because the video was taken on August sixteenth by myself, that I showed to Mr. Pearl, and then right after that, I showed it to Mr. Rodeo, and when that video contained the yard works employees giving access to this farm that they clean as a storage shed, but really what it is is their office, and what they do is they go there in the morning, they get their keys, they get their assignments, and they go in and out of this office, and that's how they're using it. So when I showed my video to Mr. Pearl, his response was to contact Mr. Igloso, the prosecutor for the case, the city, as directed him next. I then left and spoke to Mr. Rodeo, showed him the same video, and his response was exactly the same, to contact Mr. Igloso and to find out what to do next. And then I contacted Mr. Igloso myself, to see what he thought we should do next. And every time I've talked, spoken to Mr. Igloso, his response has always been the same. His job is to present the facts of the case to the court. Those facts are given to him by officials for the city, whether the Department of Building Inspection, whether it's Mr. Rodeo, whether it's Mr. Pearl, or who, what have you, not the other way around. So it's not Mr. Igloso that tells the city how to enforce the ordinance, it should be the city telling Mr. Igloso what to present in court. That's the way that should be going down, but I guess that's why they're going this week to discuss it. But I'd like to know if in fact it's proven that they're using an office illegally for the third time. Are we going to rescind this permit? I mean, that would be my first question, but the permit should be rescinded, and this new storage, uh, office removed immediately. And then I want to hear the last time before we went to court on August first, Mr. Pearl mentioned about the fact that they were going to seek the maximum fines in court, and that they were going to go and, uh, Mr. Judge wasn't pleased with the council affairs given its history with this company. And no fines were issued whatsoever, other than court costs. So the maximum fines are not levied. And a building permit was issued, in fact, like I just told you, for essentially another office, I know on the face of it, it says it's a storage shed, but, um, it doesn't take too much to get together with these guys doing. So I'm hoping that after you have your meeting, Mr. Pearl, that, uh, the permit will be rescinded, uh, the building removed, fines imposed by the court, and whatever else you have to do to force this company to either follow the law, or look for another place to conduct their business, because they cannot continue to do this. And how many times are they going to violate the same ordinance over and over again? It's your job as an administration to enforce those ordinances. And if you're not going to, if you're not going to enforce your own ordinances, why even have them? Do they just have them just for show? Do they just come in for your ordinances? And then, well, we have all these ordinances, but in some cases, we don't know how to interpret them, and in other cases, when it comes to, um, uh, fabrication of service assemblies, which is the contract designation down there, nobody can tell you what the fabrication of a service assembly is, nobody here that I'm with. So we have trouble interpreting the ordinances, and then in this case, with this third illegal structure down there, we have trouble enforcing them. And I'm not sure why that is. So I'm asking you, the council, begging you essentially, and I'm here every month, I don't want to be here, but I have plenty of other things I could be doing with my time. I could be spending with my family first and foremost. So I'm asking you for your help. I mean, I've been honest, nonstop for months now, over a year, at least a year and a half, nothing has changed. We were here in February, they had illegal offices, and almost until September, these people at yard works have been using these offices illegally all summer long. Essentially, it hasn't affected their operations one iota. So this needs to stop. I, I don't know why they're given such leeway, and I'm curious to see what's going to happen on Thursday, with Judge Smith, and what your meeting tells us, uh, this week as well. So I just want to make sure I haven't forgotten anything, because I, I've waited a lot of time, I understand it's our process. All right, so I guess that's where it is at this point. I thank, um, the council for allowing me to speak and for hearing us out, and knowing that this is a very serious issue, this is just one component of this issue, don't you? This is not the only thing going on down there. So let's see what happens at the end of this week, and I'll see you next month, I guess. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. Hopefully we get to a point where you don't have to keep going back every month. I appreciate that. Councilwoman Staggles? Okay. Well, did, did Mr. Pearl want to respond to some of that?
Well, we have, we have searched yard works on numerous occasions. Uh, we have nowhere, earlier, where the judge fines them. Um, this last time on the forest, I guess you said you found them in compliance because they removed the shed, they removed the shed from the property, so the judge found them in compliance, and therefore did not levy a fine. Um, the city has no control over what the judge issues for fines. Um, we have been on top of Mr. Wilson's, uh, accusation, we are investigating them. I did send an inspector down there after he told me about the shed and he showed me the video, and tomorrow's discussion is to ask Attorney Igloso an interpretation of what we've seen there, how do we go about enforcing it as a city to an ordinance? Is it just, again, I don't think.
We have nowhere, earlier, where the judge fines them. This last time on the forest, I guess you said he found them in compliance because they removed the shed, they removed the shed from the property, so the judge found them in compliance, and therefore did not levy a fine. The city has no control over what the judge issues for fines. We have been on top of Mr. Wilson's accusation, and we are investigating them. I did send an inspector down there after he told me about the shed, and he showed me the video, and tomorrow's discussion is to ask Attorney Iglesias an interpretation of what we've seen there, how do we go about enforcing it as a city to an ordinance? Is it just, again, I don't think pulling up to the property and moving their shed is the best way to handle that. So, that's why we're conferencing tomorrow to decide, okay, if they are operating the business out of this shed, how do we handle it?
Well, I'm glad Mr. Wilson is here, because I've talked with him about this on the, the fine, about the fines. And he said to me that there was a, a deal made between Yard Works and, or, I'm sorry, a deal, an agreement made between Yard Works and the city through Mr. Iglesias, that there wouldn't be any fines. Is that right?
I don't know what deal it was, there was, there was some pre-trial conference that took place, it was supposed to have been a trial, but it seemed like everything that was discussed was sort of discussed like behind closed doors, or where it wasn't discussed like when you think of a trial, like in a, in form, that it wasn't like that, it was already that.
Well, did, did Mr. Iglesias, shouldn't Mr. Iglesias at the, at the court hearing have advocated for the fines?
Because, you should have. If the violation was there, absolutely, I told him to ask for the fines for the violation. Well, obviously, prior to any decision, the attorneys need to come to an agreement, that's part of discretionary process of being a prosecutor. The case went in front of the judge, the judge believed that they were in compliance, that that shed or truck had been removed from the property, so he did not fine them any, any minimum number for that violation.
Well, I mean, if, if you're telling Mr. Iglesias to go for fines?
Yes.
And he comes back with zero?
He could ask for a fine. It's up to the judge, he didn't ask for a fine. He, he presented his case, whatever that happened behind closed doors, I was not there, I wasn't privy to that, but the agreement came out from, under those, under that preface that we're gonna present the case to the judge, and the judge, judge found no fines. I don't have any say over that, Councilman.
Right. But you have some say over Mr. Iglesias?
Yes.
Who I have no, uh, quite with up until now. I mean, I think you've gotta ask Mr. Iglesias, what the heck happened to the fines? And if he can't come up with a good answer, you should get rid of him. Because it sounds like, and I don't know all the facts, but it sounds like he made a deal that there wasn't gonna be any fines, after you told him to go for maximum fines.
I don't think he made a deal with no fines, I think that he presented his case, Yard Works presented their case to the judge, and the judge is, the judge is.
No, he didn't. I mean, they were there, and they said he didn't advocate for fines. So, there's a problem.
The judge, again, the judge is looking for compliance. You, if you speak to Judge Smith, he'll always say, I want compliance, when compliance is achieved, that's the goal of the court. I don't know, I can't speak for him with the fines, I know fines are not what he's looking to do.
But, we don't have control over Judge Smith, we shouldn't, right? He's the judge.
Yes.
But, you have control over Mr. Iglesias.
Yes.
And Mr. Iglesias does not sound, from what we've heard, like he was pushing for fines, like you told him to.
And Mr. Wilson wasn't behind the doors, where was I, where were you? I don't know what conversation went behind doors that attorneys have in coming to a resolution of the case.
Well, anytime I've been in a negotiation, and I went in for the maximum, and I came out with zero, I feel like I failed. So, I, I really need an explanation of what, what happened to the judge.
You know, the judge found them in compliance, I'm assuming he felt that he could not fine him.
Well, I don't even know what Mr. Iglesias did. Because it's, because on this whole thing, we all, it's always somebody else's fault. It's never so-and-so screwed up. And if Mr. Iglesias screwed up, and he did, his job was to ask to get those fines, and not make a deal behind closed doors for no fines. If, if he goes to court, and he argues for the fines, and he doesn't get any fines, okay, he did his job, and the judge made a decision. So, I, I think we need an answer on that. The second thing, I don't, unless I missed it, the, the committee voted down a temporary structure, and then there was some talk about certain structures, the building inspector can improve, I mean, the, no, the building inspector can approve.
Yes.
And Chris asked quite directly, what's the rule? Because do we approve temporary structures or don't?
Temporary structures to utilize as a business? Yes, you approve that. Sheds? The building official has the authority to approve a shed.
All sheds don't.
Difference between. All sheds, you can modify Safety Services.
I, I, what is the difference between this temporary structure and this shed?
Temporary structure utilized as a business is pretty much an office. That's what they're utilizing, utilizing the trailers at first, then you build a truck, they're utilizing that as an office. It appears to be that the shed has been converted and went to another temporary business structure. That's what we're going to discuss tomorrow, based on what the inspection had told us.
Okay, that sounds very reasonable. Did you wanna add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to, can we get real clarification on that? Because I always thought the temporary structures that came to Safety Services were for the tents that somebody puts up in the corner that sells flowers on Mother's Day, you know, the, the tent sale in front of a dress shop. That's not really what, what Safety Services is for that kind of stuff. We don't approve sheds, like you said. So, I just, I wanna know, as if, if Yard Works put something up that we didn't approve, I want them to come back. But I want some clarification too, on how the ordinance is written, which, what should be coming to us and not coming to us.
And that's what tomorrow's meeting's gonna do with the Iglesias, to see if, again, they fail to come from you to grant them a temporary business office by utilizing the approved shed.
Okay, can you also ask if that, if that's the case, if that permit's invalid?
Yes, that's the, that's the plan, I think, of tomorrow as well.
Use would be invalid. Counselor, Mr. Sticos. Yep, my last question, and again, from talking with Robert Wilson, the, apparently the judge made some statement that he doesn't levy punitive damages, but that's the job of the council. And I would like some clarification on whether that's, you know, what are, do we have the, the Safety Services Committee have the authority to do punitive damages?
I think that's a legal question.
Well, I did email that to Evan at one point. Can I, your opinion? Turn your back on me.
I'm under the impression only the judge can levy penalties unless they're violating one of our licenses.
I think there's several concepts in this discussion that are getting intermixed with each other, that may be confusing about the whole Yard Works issue. I think this shed, structure, whatever may be issue, is a very small component of what I see as the problem on that site. In my opinion, the problem is, and always has been, the use on that site. What is being used on that site, what is the designation on that site, and whether or not that site is in compliance with the legal zoning. Talking about whether or not a shed has a permit or not, it's, you wanna wind up with discussions like this. Because if there were a thousand sheds in that property, but they weren't making any noise, they wouldn't be here tonight. So, the use follows the noise, and that's the important distinction that I make with this. Should they, should they have filed a shed, put a shed, file in the court? I don't think so, I think that shows a, and, and if it's true that they are using that as an office, I think that shows a brazen lack of respect for the court, and I wouldn't tolerate that. I mean, I, I think I would have sent a, I think I would have sent an inspector down there to document what exactly is going on in that shed. And if you haven't so far, how else are you gonna do it if they stop using it tonight? If they're watching on a closed circuit TV tonight, and they stop going in the shed, you've kind of lost your opportunity. So, I, I think the problem still continues to be the use of that business on that property. And whether or not it is a contractor yard, or some other use on that property. That seems to be the issue that no one wants to tackle.
Well, I, I agree with you, and I thank you for getting us focused. However, you're right, the city seems completely unable to deal with, with the use issue. But, and in the meantime, you know, we're chasing around these, you know, other issues that aren't really the issue. But I, again, I'm frustrated that, you know, we heard tonight, well, the judge doesn't wanna do, he just wants compliance. But we also know that, and then we hear that the judge thinks the council has the authority for punitive damages. Now, I think three days after your hearing, Ramison and I met with a constituent who was fined $7,500 by the court. Euretzian, look that up, Peter Euretzian. So, for, for something that had note, it was all visual, so, I don't, somebody either has to tell Judge Smith that he's making a mistake, that he does have the authority to, to make punitive damages, or somebody has to say, the council has the authority to do punitive damages, which sounds a little shaky to me legally.
Right. What I, what I, what I understand about that day is this, that the two sides of the dispute are before the judge. The judge sits there, he was actively seeking out people fighting and wanna resolve their problems. So, he sits there, and they come to him with a problem which he has to make a decision on. It's his goal to get to a resolution, which I agree with. If both parties to the controversy come up with a stipulated solution, and he agrees to it, which is what a consent order is, then that effectively ends the dispute, and the notion of fairness or power of all fines goes away, because it's then governed by what was signed by the two parties in front of the judge. So, many times when I'm in court, and I see parties agreeing to something, which I say, well, that sounds a little crazy. But if the two parties are happy, and the judge doesn't interject, you know, they don't interject themselves and give their own editorial opinion on a deal that you just crafted yourself. So, I don't fault the court with that, and I don't, and I, you know, I can't fault, we don't know in law, I can't fault the prosecutor, because the judge may have asked him, are they in compliance at this moment? And they very well could have been. They very well could have been. But ten seconds later, as Mr. Wilson said, they could have been, you know, unbeknownst to David Iglesias, who's a fine attorney, but unbeknownst to him, they could have been setting up this shitski. And it's how it's consistent with what they do, sometimes it surprises me. But again, getting back to the issue, these things are going to happen, and it's going to happen until the city addresses the use. Is what they're doing permitted, is what they're doing not permitted? The noise, noise follows the use, sheds follow the use, offices follow the use. Everything deals with one thing that people aren't addressing, as to whether or not this is a contractor yard, a transfer station, a recycle facility, or any other of the definitions that were gone with it in that area.
Well, then my question for Mr. Pirlo is, which I agree with what Evan just said, is, are you gonna, is this meeting gonna finally deal with the use question?
Meeting's to deal with the shed issue.
So, do you, do you think the use issue is an issue? Or is that just?
That was, that was, that was rectified when it was brought up about the processing. The whole issue down there was the processing. The processing of materials makes noise, makes dust. We've ended the processing part of that. I think you've, you've ended the sifting. Right, can I interject a little? Right, what about your processing? I mean, there was jackhammering down there a week ago, and I'm pretty sure, it doesn't serve in here specifically, but I'm pretty sure jackhammering is not allowed at that site. And when I told you that, and when I spoke to Mr. Ficacchio about it, I was told, well, how many times does it happen? It happened this many times, well, because we need a consistent, it shouldn't happen one time. Don't care if it happened a thousand times or one time, one time's enough, one time. So, it was going on for four and a half hours, one time, one time too many. This letter, before Mr. Rodeo got on board, wasn't even being, wasn't even being talked about, because the floor building official, Mr. Pike, didn't see it that way. Then we brought on a new official, Mr. Rodeo, and he saw a different one, so now we have this letter. And I worry about that, if you brought on another official, and then another official, and another official, they'd all see it a different way too. So, I agree with you, you say that you stopped the, the usage down there, and you stopped the process, and I, I, I just don't agree with that.
Okay. So, what about these punitive damages? I mean, Evan, I know you, you said that the key issue is the use, but does the Safety Services Committee have the right to levy?
I think, I think ultimately, you could close the, the business down on a few stuff there, you know?
Well, they don't have a license with us. Well?
Not at all.
So, how can we shut them down?
Well, it's a violation, you know, it gets back to the zoning, if they're operating outside of the zoning use.
Right, but the punitive damages?
No one knows if they're addressing that part.
The punitive damages, I can't see. I don't see that.
By the kind of.
I don't think so.
I've asked, I've asked the administration to define what a fabrication of a subassembly is, and Mr. Pirlo had said that the administration was working on definitions. Been saying that for months, there's still no definition of what a fabrication of a subassembly is.
This, this whole, this whole Yard Works is quite honestly, you know, fascinating me to the, to the point where every time we meet at Park Avenue, I end up going by the neighborhood and just looking to see what they're doing. So, I have perhaps the anecdotal analogy of what's going on there, and to me, it looks like that, just from what I've seen, they're taking material from other sites, bringing it onto the property, and making a mountain on the side. So, that to me, and doing something, a value-added process to that material, to sell it or reuse it, which is nice, except if you live next to it. And the fact of the matter is, that to me, is either a recycling or a transfer station, in my opinion. You transfer one thing to another, using large trucks to transfer material, leave it from one site, onto a truck to deliver it somewhere else. A subassembly station is, if you had, if you were building a modular house, or you were building a roof or something like that, and you built it on site, and you're gonna put it on a truck, and then truck it away, that to me would be more of a contractor yard. But this, I mean, it's dirt, there's nothing contracting happening on the site, it's a pile of rubble, segregated by other piles of rubble.
I'm trying to come to something before you go away, and before, you know, it's Counselor Popkins. This is something this council has been trying to do something with since November of last year, when this first came up, and probably before that, when Counselor Sticos was getting some complaints from the area. Can you look at, before the next council meeting, what the remedy for this is at this point? Is it an investigation? Is it some kind of a medial call-in before us? And, and do we have any power to determine what they're doing is not in effect part of what a contractor yard would be? Because I've seen some of your comments, it sounds like we have to catch them.
I would like to show an executive session with the council to discuss my feelings and different strategy. There appears to be different ideas floating around about how to handle this, and you was my client. And you as my client, council that is, I would want to receive your direction. What I personally feel is not particularly relevant to your decision-making, but if you give me a direction, I'll follow it.
Okay, so I'm going to schedule an executive session before the next full council meeting so we can have a discussion on what the possible solution is. Then, Councilman Hopkins, you had a word on again.
Yeah, thank you, President. Evan, I agree with you 100%. This company is making us look foolish. And every time we give them an inch, they take a yard. And they go to the courts and they come back the next day and they do whatever the hell they want. I say, in executive session or wherever we go, shut them down, bring them in for a show cause meeting until we get the facts about what this company's doing to this people, to these people in this neighborhood. They need to be shut down, whether it's temporarily or permanently. And we need to find out what the hell is going on down there. Because this has been going on for too long. We're looking like idiots. And these people, these constituents, need to be protected.
You're 100% right, Councilman Hopkins. The only issue is we... They don't have a city license, so we can't have a show cause. So that's the hope in the executive session. We can put our MAGA heads together, our attorneys fair away. We can solve this problem because it feels like it's just spinning and spinning and spinning month after month after month. And we need to get to the root cause of the issue, and that's it.
Yeah, fair enough, President, but it's not fair that these people come in every single month and complain about what's going on in their back door. I mean, this needs to be solved.
100%.
Thank you.
Counselor Stagels?
Yeah, I...
I'll save that for executive session. Thank you, Councilmember.
Sure.
The president's a soundbite going to... Be available, Director? Because I believe, um... Mr. Wilson, you guys have a soundbite as well that you did on your end, correct?
The testing.
Oh, no, I'll need a testing. Are you guys having a phone testing?
They just finished it last week.
Is that... Was it at the safety meeting or at the next executive meeting?
I don't have it yet. The company's producing a report.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, now that we've gone to Yard Works, thank you to the residents again. I apologize that we can't seem to figure this out for you, but we're still here. We're still fighting with you and we're going to do whatever we can. Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's see if we can fly through the Council member communications as it's 10 o'clock and it's been there since 5:30. So much as I love serving the city, we've done the heavy lifting. Now we're down to just some updates on some things. So I got 1885 Broad Street, Councilman Vargas.
Just an update on the director, who's mine? That's the one in the corner. We were trying to get ahold of the owner, but we have her having a tough time.
I think that's the contact for the owner. I suppose they went back to court Thursday.
That's not the one that we're being boarded out, Frank. That was something different.
That's the one that she told me they were going to... They're looking to board up.
Okay, I'm sorry. You replied a mountain regarding Oakland Cemetery. Sorry, I replied to you saying, "What are they boarding up at the cemetery?"
Yeah, I know, sorry. I think 1885 was the one that they were going to board. Yeah, that's going back in front of the... Going back in front of the judge Thursday.
Okay, so Oakland Cemetery update?
I haven't heard anything yet.
Not at all? Is there absolutely any way that we're... I mean, we have, um... It's a big... It's clear business, it's a cemetery, right? Fence is falling apart. It's an ice... It's really bad. If that was a business and people were calling, we would have zoning inspector out there.
I know we've got... I know we've given them numerous vibrations over the years. Nothing seems to have changed. And if there was a yard, we'd go and cut it, but it's a whole cemetery. So obviously, we can't...
The whole fence, like some plane... Some of it was actually on the city, on the sidewalk. People... And that's a bus stop right around that area which is very close to Montgomery and I want to say Smith baby area. So when people are walking or even kids are walking now we're to school because it's... It's a church on a parkway where if you do walk... No, in fact, it's got... Just want to make sure the kids are not...
I'm going to follow up tomorrow. I mean, I should know that Pedro's no longer with us.
Yeah, that's...
Um, so I'm going to follow up. The mayor, she's kind of taken over Pedro's... A lot of houses.
That was actually going to be my next question. Is that on the council communication? I was just wondering, an update on that zoning inspector's scheme that Pedro's no longer with us?
He's in. We hired, um... Can't think of his name. We hired him Monday. Carlos. We hired Carlos Monday. So he's kind of getting into the loop.
Thank you, Carlos last name?
Carlos last... Dominich.
Okay.
He just started Monday. So we're kind of bringing him into the loop. Yeah, that's good.
Good.
So that's still good.
Perfect. The next one I just had up was, um, city website. Am I skipping? Probably am. City website update. Um, I just took a look at it. John gave me the review, so thank you, John, for that.
Yeah, we're just taking incremental steps. We're hoping for this sometime in September, hopefully.
Thank you, I'm asking. Um, and then on the diversity, one of the reasons I had an update on there was just to let the council members do know that we are working on a survey that had initially gone out, but I believe based on Susan's recommendation, we're bringing that back up to the Diversity Commission in September. And once that link is up, which is a survey, just ask the council members, if possible, if they can take a look at it, share it if they can. Um, and then I'm hoping that we can find strategic ways to make sure that that survey is out to everyone. Um, and after that, hopefully, the mayor is able to put it on the website. It is...
I haven't got it yet. I want to get the final product from the commission before I...
Absolutely, no problem.
Go through with it.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, that's it, thank you.
So, first, I want to make sure that is the city had social media?
We do.
The city president?
We have Facebook and Twitter as of Monday. Um, just established them. The mayor uses his own Facebook usually for that kind of correspondence, but we just established our own Facebook and Twitter page. So Jay Endosian, the mayor's office, is going to be in charge of handling that. Yes.
Um, and then, so on the main page, is it on the website?
Yeah.
The resident portal being on the...
On the main page as a separate accessible part of the website. Yes. Uh, Councilmember Brady has all said this. He's not here. And then Councilman Petloskis just waved me down and said he was good. And all business? Quick, speed, speed. Councilman Vargas, I won't be able to attend your October 3 event. I'll be away. But I would love to be there, but my office won't lock me out because of it.
I won't be able to.
Counselor Hopkins, yeah.
Thank you, President. Mr. Perolo, Northeast Street. They told us last month they were going to calm down and slow down. Back again, they're loud, loud as can be, doing their mulching. And I got numerous complaints this week.
Truthfully, we haven't addressed it. Has it? It's been slow, so we haven't addressed it. I know they paved that dirt road that was...
Yeah, they paved that road. But the noise level back up, back up again. Saturday, Saturday, and again today.
All right, I'll send them back out there. I'll send them back. Counselor Stagels?
Could you ask them to look... The inspector to look at, is it Eddie Street? At the piles of logs that are Lord Yard Works property? But they just look very dangerous that they could roll into the homes on Eddie Street? Into the garage or something?
What street are you talking about? Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
Can I just ask what the city request in Twitter name is?
Excellent question. And I'll forward it to you.
Can't find it.
I don't have it. Before I ask for motion to send all the new business to committee, I noticed an error on the solar farm installation moratorium extension that should not be sponsored by the mayor. It should be sponsored by Council President Farina. I don't know. And are the clerks here?
Yes.
And then I got a rash of stuff because the mayor was going to support the, um... The one that Mike and I sponsored for the solar amendment. And I got the residents saying, "We all like war four" because we're trying to get that before us for a hearing so we can hear what the planning stuff. So if you could, um... You can leave the two mics on the solar, that's fine. But on the moratorium extension, that should be myself. And Councilman Brady.
Oh, I see. This one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, Alex, I will accept the corrected new business to the proper committees. Motion to send all the corrected new business to committees for review. Second, motion to second our discussion. Seeing the unclerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. And for Debbie Flimman, if you're watching, there is no miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk. The city council's next regular monthly meeting will be held on Monday, September 23, 2019. Without all this, in motion adjourned.
Second, the case...
Have you adjourned? We are adjourned.